I pledge the court as regular meeting of the Lennox Township Board and Trustee's to June 6, 2022 at 6:32 PM. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with everything that has to be said.
Proof of meeting agenda.
A couple of changes to the agenda. The first item is to add the under-approval minutes, the minutes of May 2, 2022. And then we need to add additional items to the agenda. Item O, McLaren Medical Outreach Vehicle Lease Remove Renewal. Item P, the Planning Commission Bylaw Revision. And under item Q, Commission and Committees Needing Compensation.
Yes ma'am. I believe Q is supposed to be Planning Commission Bylaw Revision.
Oh, no, we had to remove the vehicle vol purchase proposal.
Okay, thank you.
So they removed the other two up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to make a motion that we improve the agenda with the addition of the 5-2-22 meeting and add a O, P, and Q to the agenda.
Second. I have a motion by trustee Gurley. My right?
Michelle.
Michelle, I think.
That's on. Do you want me to say it again?
No, it's fine. Yeah, thank you.
Motion by trustee Gurley, supported by trustee Clifford. May adjourned court please call roll.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Kendall?
Aye.
Approval of minutes.
I'd like to make a motion that we improve the minutes from 5-2-22, 5-3-22, and 5-24-22.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Gurley, supported by treasurer Donald. Adjourned court please call roll.
Gurley?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Kendall?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Public announcements. I would like to mention, thank you all, whoever did possibly show up, the New Haven Lennox Memorial Day Parade went off beautifully this year. It was a nice service up at the cemetery for those that were there, and the veterans were honored. So I'd just like to mention that, thank you. Open comment.
Hello, my name's Joe Marino. I see that you put our little problem on the agenda finally after two months. Unfortunately, it's a little too late, I've already filed a state admission on their labor relations board. In this packet, I have, not the application, but the complaint number, complaint, and all the supporting data. If I'm allowed, I can give it to your attorney.
That really won't be necessary if I have no idea that you filed, but if you file, it will come to me. I mean, if you want to give me a copy or whatever.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with that, I should give out a copy. It's a shame I had to do this. It's been two months. People, this is business law 101. When you hold a mandatory training, you have to pay for it. You have to pay the employees that are there at the training. And if you guys don't know that, then you definitely need to possibly start taking some life classes in business, because you don't have the skills. This is a major problem and a major disappointment in what has happened. Furthermore, it is rather evident that I am going to be replaced on the planning commission. Okay? Now, in the planning commission, one of the responsibilities of the planning commission is to update the master plan. The master plan does need to be updated, okay? Needs to be updated very shortly, okay? The people that originally did the last master plan was more of a master dream. It was not a master plan at all. Your master plan is your sales brochure to your community. That's what it needs to be. It needs to have outlook. It needs to have reality. Neither the master, or this last master plan did not have any of that. It was very sparse, very discombobulated, and hard for a developer to understand. Because when a developer looks at it, he is looking to see what is, what this township wants.
Mr. Marino, your agreement of time limit has expired. Thank you so much.
Mr. O'Sell? Is it possible, can I have an extra minute from you?
That's not appropriate.
That is...
It's not appropriate? You're actually gonna hold me, you're actually gonna hold me in three minutes right now.
Actually, you have to hold me in three.
Well, you have it. It's there. I really, I apologize for having to do it. It's a shame I had to do it. But, there you go. Thank you.
Item seven, public hearing. One, 2022-2023 budget public hearing.
I'll read the public hearing notice into the record. Notice is hereby given that the Lennox Township Board and Trustees will hold a public hearing under the proposed township budget for this good year 2022 to 2023 on Monday, June 6, 2022, beginning at 6:30 PM. The property tax mileage rate proposed to be levied to support the proposed budget will be subject to the hearing. The Lennox Township mileage rate for 2022 is as follows. The township mileage is 1 mil. Road mileage is 1 mil. The library mileage is 1.5 mils. The fire mileage is 3.5 mils. All of the above grades will be subject to the headly robback if applicable. This notice is posted in compliance with Public Act 2027 of 1976 as amended, MCLA 41.72A23 and the Americans with Disabilities Act. The Lennox Township Board will provide necessary and reasonable auxiliary aids and services such as ciders for the hearing impaired and audio tapes for printed materials being considered at the meeting to individuals with disabilities of the set of days' notice to the Lennox Township clerk. With that, I make a motion to open the public hearing for the 2022-2023 budget at 6:40 PM. Second.
I have a motion by court Kendall, supported by treasurer Donald. Adjourned court please call roll.
Kendall?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
You should have in front of you my own budget summary. This has been in your mailbox, that's the 24th, so I hope you've had time to review it. Good evening. This evening, you guys do have the proposed budget items in front of you. You guys have worked very feverishly and collectively at putting this together. I believe it's one of the more positive budgets that actually have come out. You guys have done a great job making everything in perspective. One of the most important things is you put this together and you review it, and you move forward this evening with the proposed passing of this budget. The perspective behind looking at people and how you value them, that is one of the most important things. I believe that your operating budget is one of the most economic and fiscal opportunities within the county. We've looked very hard at these things, the background information, some of the funding and the balance numbers for wages, we've looked at and was all brought forward for the board to review, and you guys have worked very well at doing that. I will keep in mind, there was comments made and people look at numerous things. Your committees are one of the highest-paid committees throughout the community, and I believe your knowledge, your training, and your effectiveness proves that. So with that, this evening, we bring this forward to the board and the general public for approval request.
If there's a public comment, we have to close and then board discussion.
Is there any public comment on the budget? See, there is no public comment on the budget.
I make a motion to close the public hearing at 6:43, 6:44. Second.
I have a motion by court Kendall, second by treasurer Donald. Adjourned court please call roll.
Kendall?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Any discussion from the board?
I have none.
All right. Seeing that there is no discussion, we'll move on with the consent agenda. All items listed on the list consent agenda are considered routine by the township board and will be enacted by one motion. According to established township meeting rules, there will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the board or public still requests at or prior to a meeting, in which event the chair of the meeting may remove such items from the consent agenda for discussion and consideration under the agenda. Item number nine below, approval of consent agenda shall be by majority, roll call vote of those present in agreement.
There are bills and orders, we have $524,717.55 outstanding and due at this time, $170,674.41 which were invoiced this process during the month, for a total that we are seeking approval I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda with orders in the amount of $695,391.96. Second.
I have a motion by treasurer Donald, second by trustee Clifford. Adjourned court please call roll.
Donald?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Kendall?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Item 10, unfinished business. Item A, sidewalk waiver request for Rosales Farm and Garden, 19-06-27-200-01760529. Mr. Cassidy, do you have a second? Or do you want to give me another minute?
You had asked at the last meeting what my recommendation was, and now listed denied your request, I think sidewalks need to be installed. I'm brash, we haven't waived any of this date to my knowledge. We're starting to get new developments occurring that are put in sidewalks, so my recommendation is to space out, recommend denied.
Good evening, Gary, and I'm going to make it for the Rosales Farm situation there on brash. We're asking for a waiver of the sidewalk, because we believe, even though there is some development, and my, I obviously is building two buildings and they're up, it's not a big pedestrian area, and the Rosales home and both parcels, both north and south of the parcel, may I, of course, hear the group? So, when we received sidewalk approval, this is the driveway, and so we did show the sidewalk, we didn't say whether we're going to ask for a variance or a waiver from the township board. This is down to the Jersey to the 2022. So, they own this piece to the south, and this piece to the north. So, they're in agreement that when either one of these two are developed, that they or their successors would agree to put the sidewalk in at that point in time. And they're willing to sign an agreement similar to what we did over in 26th, that when those occur, and we, if you want it, or it in both forms, but it will be recorded amongst thirdes, talk to your group as to that process. And Adams, we signed an agreement, it wasn't in record before, or was recorded by knowledge. But, right now, at practical level, that's why we're asking for the waiver, that you waive it, because there's nothing on either side that's going to be connected to it. Eventually, and hopefully it will be, because they don't sign a, you know, firm or this contract. But when that occurs, then they will do it, and it's going to be recorded in form. Whoever buys it, when they do the title search, it'll show that that requirement or search is in place, and that person, entity, company would have to do it. Plus, if they're the seller of it, they would make the disclosure that that agreement's in place. So, it's basically a technical request, and I realize, well, it seems as this is, you know, one of your main highlights, like what Chicago is, but if you go along there, it's not down like by New Haven High School, or where there's pedestrians, or even bicycles on a regular basis, that are frequent in that area, because there's no retail. They have about 19 customers a day at a print store in Churchfield. Maybe they'll have a few more here, but it's not a facility where there's a high volume of car traffic or pedestrian traffic. So, we would ask that you waive it, right? Between myself and the township attorney, we would do that, and see if it's required by by some reason in the future.
That, the piece on the south, that's owned, is that owned by Mr. Rosell?
Correct, and the piece to the north.
Oh, he owns both?
Right. He and his brother.
Right, right.
Right. Yeah, so they own, yeah.
So they own, they own both properties surrounding the one they built on.
Correct. Yeah, so, whatever, if they build something, or if they sell when somebody else builds, they're going to make the disclosure. And if they built it, then obviously they would be bound, and put the sidewalk in, let's say if they did the south part, and then south piece, then the part that they're developing now. So, when either part, either north or south, is built on, then maybe put the sidewalk in.
Okay, so, I have a question here now, so, okay, let's say this south piece is developed, Joe puts, or Rosell's put the sidewalk in. Are they going to do the north piece too, at that time?
No, because it would still remain vacant.
Oh, I got you, okay.
Because it's moving now, we don't...
I got you. Perfect, I'm good. All right.
So that's our request.
I would like to make a motion for denial based on the planner's recommendations that, you know, this property is surrounded by vacant land, I understand that, but we did hope some go to the fire and have them put in the sidewalks that were required. So, it is my motion to deny the, um, oh, I'm sorry, to deny their request. I will second.
I have a motion by court Kendall, second by treasurer Donald. Adjourned court please call roll.
Kendall?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 11, new business. Item A, 2021-2022 budget minutes, under court.
At this point, I have one budget amendment that we need to put into place, and this is something that our auditors normally do when they're here to audit, but they requested that we take care of this ourselves this year. And this is a budget amendment to take care of, to cover the cost of water and sewer bond issues that is paid through Home County Public Works. Those costs, the bond issue costs are $595,621. The interest expense on those bonds is $1,273,361, for a total of $1,868, or $868,982. And that would be taken out of our fund balance.
I make a motion that we do the 2021 and 22 budget amendments as stated.
I'll support.
I have a motion by trustee Gurley, supported by court Kendall. Adjourned court please call roll.
Gurley?
Aye.
Kendall?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Item B, 2022-23 budget. Since we've already had discussion on this, I'm going to motion this one.
I will make a motion, we approve the 2022-2023 budget as stated. Second.
I have a motion by treasurer Donald, second by trustee Gurley. Adjourned court please call roll.
Donald?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Kendall?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Item C, wait schedule adoption.
I make a motion that we approve the proposed 2022 wait schedule proposal A. I'll second that motion.
I have a motion by treasurer Donald, supported by court Kendall. Adjourned court please call roll.
Donald?
Aye.
Kendall?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Nay.
Item B, 2022 smart contract and resolution. Mr. White?
Mr. Supervisor members of the board, first, I might take a moment tonight, I had a chance to introduce you personally, but introduce the public and our other staff members that are here. Bonnie McInerney Slater. Bonnie is the new Macomb County community unbothered person for smart bus. She took the place of Fred Barbrett, for some of you that have never worked with her over the years, following his recent retirement, where he's gone to work for his wife's firm at a manufacturing facility. I don't know if Bonnie wants to say a couple things and introduce herself, or just wants me to tag us through this at this point. In front of you this evening is the smart, is the smart agreement. This is the same agreement, basically from a language standpoint, the smart is used for the last number of years, and it's basically the same agreement that is used by all labor and communities who have a community partnership with smart. The total amount of this year's agreement is actually in the amount of $22,294, made up of $5,664 in what's called community credits, and $14,660 in, I'm sorry, $5,664 in municipal credits, and $14,660 in community credits. These amounts are basically transferred to the EMS for the operation of our small buses, and the upkeep and insurance and so on, on those vehicles. We, all we ask for tonight is for the board to approve this contract, which would in effect transfer those funds to the EMS for those users. So we're recommending a motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve the 2022 smart contract and resolution as described by Mr. White.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Clifford, second by trustee Gurley. Adjourned court please call roll.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Kendall?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Just for the record, the township resolution authorizing the use of the smart municipal and community credits is going to be referred to as 2022-3.
Thank you. Item E, 2022-2023 water service user charger. Mr. Safe.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. Good evening, board members. This is the time of the year that we revisit and make recommendation of the next year water and sewer rates. And the first one is the recommended water rate, water rates for 2022, 2023. Again, this is a pass through with a 10% adjustment on the Lennox Township. So we are recommending a slight increase from $56.3 for a thousand cubic feet of water to $57.2 for next year's rates. And the board should have a copy of my recommendation letter dated May 16 with all the calculation shown.
I will make a motion to approve the water sewer service user charge rate increase from $56.30 to $57.20 as presented by the township engineer in conjunction with the DPW superintendent. I'll second.
I have a motion by court Kendall, second by treasurer Donald. Adjourned court please call roll.
Kendall?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Item 2022-2023 wastewater disposal service user charger. Mr. Safe.
Thank you, again, this is a similar methodology for the wastewater rate. You have my letter dated May 16, going through the calculation of the rate. And we are recommending a slight increase again for this year from 11, I'm sorry, $114.17 to $117.40 for fiscal year 2022, 2023. Again, these numbers, as well as the water, has been reviewed by the DPW superintendent as an agreement with the split commission.
The first number seven, I make a motion to be ignored.
Make a motion to approve wastewater disposal service user rate, charge rate increase for 2022, 2023 from $114.70 MCF to $117.40 MCF as presented by the DPW superintendent and the township engineer. I'll support.
I have a motion by court Kendall, second by treasurer Donald. Adjourned court please call roll.
Kendall?
Aye.
Donald?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Item B, park place gate proposal, Mr. Traubler.
Good evening. I am here in front of you tonight for your request, they put together a couple different quotes to replace our existing playgrounds. Most of you are aware, a couple years ago, we installed a fitness center out there for, and part of that, it approached on one of the playgrounds that we removed. During budgets last year, this year, we discussed about, instead of putting two separate, replacing it with one large one. The current equipment out there was the original equipment that was put in in 2000 when we originally built the park. I met with a couple different salespeople from different vendors, they put together some preliminary proposals, different ideas, and one of the vendors did come back with a, a really nice plan, a great layout that I think would have worked very well, not only for our park, but our community as well. All of you should have received the quote over the weekend outlining the different equipment and the layout as well. Instead of doing this in phases, there is a benefit to doing this in one, one project, if you will. It did increase not only the program, in the vendor discount, but it's just going to save us some shipping as well as mobilization costs as well. This company that did submit the proposal is the same company whose equipment is currently out there. They have a great warranty program, they stand behind their equipment, and I think looking at what's out there after 22 years shows the value in that equipment. The equipment is still made here in the USA, that's made right in Fond du Lac, Wisconsin. The sales company is based out of Ohio, so nothing is very far away. She did put together, like I said, a, a very comprehensive playground, if you will. I guess if anybody has any questions on some of the different equipment, I can definitely go through, but basically covers a lot of different aspects. There's multiple slides, there's different climbing, there's multiple different kinds of swings, including swings with very little, almost barrier free type situations. And there's really activities for all ages, including one, one of the areas is purely interactive. So from what I've been able to read and gather on it, the kids will be able to even create their own games if they, with these interactive devices that are out there. So with that being said, going with an artificial turf type liner instead of the natural wood chips that require, you know, constant upkeep because of needs and replacing and so forth, total cost to replace and make it one large playground came in at $259,816.
That's combined both in one?
That would be making it, instead of doing it in phases, it would be a one time, one large playground.
And to some, to take care of all ages ultimately, right?
Correct. Yeah, there would be something really out there for, you know, from, from very small tots, you know, to 12, 13, 14 year olds. I mean, there's, like I said, there's multiple timings, there's multiple slides, there's two zip lines, there's a couple different swings, especially for the little ones that even the parents can be on a swing with them as well. The equipment is, you know, it's, 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 it's always changing, and I mean, even from what we had from the beginning versus what's available now, it has changed quite drastically. And of course, the materials and the coates and everything else has, has gotten much better. All the hard works may not stay on us, so it, it's built to withstand the environment. The other, the other dancers to add to your other question as well, we will also see savings, not only in shipping, mobilization costs and so forth, but some of the discounts that they offer came in, I believe roughly $15,000 more because we're doing one package instead of two.
I have no more questions.
If there's any more discussion, I make a motion to be ignored.
I make a motion, we approve the park place gate proposal as presented by Mr. Traubler at the cost of $259,000 and a $2,259,816.
Second.
I have motioned by trustee Clifford, second by trustee Gurley, and the deputy clerk please call the board.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item A, set the ongoing membership proposal, Mr. Traubler.
Good evening. This evening, the Township Supervisor's Office is requesting that the board consider a re-joinment to SEMCO. In your packet, you will find a proposal to the board while working with the County Chesterfield Township and the Village of New Haven on the Salt River Greenway Project. The question of why Lennox Township was no longer a SEMCO member arose, of which the County Chesterfield and New Haven are actually part of that. The reason was, the question was brought up, was that the communities that are working on the Salt River Greenway project were looking to apply for a grant that was exclusive to SEMCO members. Had the opportunity that Lennox Township might have missed out. SEMCO has, has so much to offer, Lennox Township, not just in grants, but in many fields otherwise. Therefore, this evening, the Supervisor's Office is in fact asking for the following, which can be done in a two-part motion. Prior to that, let me just explain that the benefits of the SEMCO membership can be outweighed not only in this one proposal, but the actual return for the information, the support and the items that we can return back from them to the community. We do have samples of information from them, but just the green way, the way they proposed it, is well worth this by itself. Lennox Township to rejoin SEMCO and approve a $1,711 in dues for the 2022 year, and that the board also adopt the supervisor, excuse me, appoint the supervisor as a delegate to SEMCO, which is standard, but the clerk as the alternate, which is also standard. With that, I'll bring it back to the board for consideration, motion to be ignored.
Mr. Traubler, who, how often does SEMCO meet?
SEMCO meets quarterly. You mean?
No, as a group, just with a regular meeting, that's our regular meeting?
Oh, SEMCO's at least every quarter. If not, they do have special meetings, I know when I was at another community, we would have probably every two months, we had a SEMCO meeting besides the actual quarterly meetings. And then SEMCO actually has my person, or my annual subcommittee meetings routinely. So they're constantly on the move. I will tell you from past experience, Mr. Clifford, that SEMCO is extremely active and very beneficial.
Well, we dealt with it when I was at the road commission, we were, you know, the road commission had involved in some of those things, and I was just, I had been out of touch for a while, I didn't know often they were meeting, I'd been retired for a while, so.
Yeah, they are, they are extremely beneficial, and, especially in these projects, I will tell you, if you look at the neighboring communities, they have been instrumental in a number of parks and additional supporting areas for greenways and parks. I know one of our neighboring communities actually bonded with, it was about 1.9 million for one park because of SEMCO's involvement, and they did all the grant ready.
May I ask a question?
Of course.
It's $1,711 in dues for 2022, is that a calendar year or a fiscal year? Because we're halfway through 2022 at this point.
So our membership dues are every year, due on anniversary of our initiation?
So if we passed it today, then $1,700 would be due again next year this time?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we weren't paying for six months that have already elapsed.
No.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, I'll bring it back to the board for consideration. Any other questions, I'm sorry, for clarification?
The only thought was just to ask, she was, it was certainly his alter.
Yeah, I'm hiding that, yes, sir.
If there's no further discussion, I make a motion to be ignored.
I will make a motion to approve Lennox Township rejoining SEMCO and authorize payment of $1,711 in payable in dues for 2022, second, at the, with the year ending as of this date, June, and also that we appoint Supervisor Reader as a delegate and Clerk Candell myself as the alternate.
Support.
Motion by Court Candell, second by Treasurer Holland, and the deputy clerk please call the board.
Candell?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Item K, building department fee schedule update, second court.
I was approached by Amy Flood, our building department manager, with an updated fee schedule for the building department. We just put all of our inspectors under contract, and this fee schedule aligns with the contracts that we have put our inspectors under. So she is requesting approval of the new fee schedule.
I assume Amy did a lot of research on it. Sean, can you reason?
Yes, yes. Amy has been working on this.
I don't want us to be out of line with her.
Yeah, no, she's been working on this particular piece along with the contracts for our inspectors since the beginning of the year. At least February.
She's done intelligent job.
Mr. Clifford, if I may, what you're looking at, and all of it, yeah, but no, what I'm saying is, Ms. Flood did a great job at going around to the surrounding communities, and it's really based upon the population, so that's where they moved those numbers based on the population.
I did, I did this, I kind of went around a few years ago with the board's approval and, and matched up our fire fees with what surround the communities, I went to some various fire departments, and we were kind of high on some things, so we adjusted at that time, but I didn't get involved in this one, but I assume Amy did a nice job, so.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the updated building department's fee schedule as recommended by the building department manager.
Second.
I have motioned by trustee Gurley, supported by Court Candell, and the deputy clerk please call the board.
Gurley?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Item J, forward building department vehicle proposal, Mr. Traubler.
Good evening, Gordon. This evening, the Supervisor's Office is coming forward with a request with the purchase of the new F-150 that's been made, with the, excuse me, with the purchase of the new F-150 that we've purchased here for the building department and the other departments within the township. Inquiries have been made regarding the old F-150 currently sitting in the parking lot. Our proposal's very simple, we put it out for a closed bid with the highest bid being presented to the board for approval. The bid shall be sent to the Supervisor's Office in sealed envelopes and will be opened by the Supervisor and the clerk prior to the board meeting of August, with the deadline being submitted for those bids on Thursday prior to the August board meeting. Recommendation will be put up on, I believe, Facebook, and we can advertise it within our website here. I don't think it's worth the cost of putting out in a news article or in the Macomb Daily and those items.
I'll, I'll just want to add, if you're going to do that, that's fine, make sure that it's sold as is.
Oh, most definitely.
That language should be in motion if you approve it and it's sold as is.
I will make a motion to approve the proposal to put the former building department vehicle out for closed bid to be sold as is with a bid deadline of July 28, 2022, the highest bid to be presented to the board trustees at the August first board meeting.
Support.
And that's what it says?
First board meeting in August, right? Is it August?
It's the Thursday before.
Oh, okay.
Is it?
I don't know.
The first is the first board meeting.
All right.
I'm not trusting my deputy to put that one down.
I did, this is me.
Yes, I did.
All right, I have motioned by Court Candell, second by Treasurer Holland, and the deputy clerk please call the board.
Candell?
Aye.
Holland?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Item K, Parks and Recreation Committee appointment, Mr. Traubler.
Good evening, members of the board. This evening, the Supervisor's Office comes forward to the board with a request. With the recent creation of the Parks and Recreation Committee, the Supervisor's Office is hereby putting forward the following people for spots on the Parks and Recreation Committee that have been submitted to his office. Planning Commission Liaison, Jason Walker, term concurrent with theirs on the Planning Commission. Board of Trustees Liaison, Supervisor Reader, term concurrent with that of the board. Members-at-large, Ken Thompson for term expiring on December 31st, 2024. These are, of course, standard terms. Member-at-large, Christina Churchy for the term expiring on December 31st, 2023. That I bring it back to the board for recommendations, I'm going to answer.
I will add now that the members-at-large that did submit applications for this, I am having an interview with a large interested party tomorrow at 4:30.
Well, I, the question I had looking at this is, we have a long-term plan in many communities here that's not included on this commission. Steve was, let me finish, Steve was to help design along with Cam Traubler and different people, our kind of vision for the park, along with, I was part of that, but those two worked long and hard on this, and not having them on that commission, I've seen a lot of the parks he's designed, and he'd be an asset to that.
I've seen a lot of the parks he's designed and he'd be an asset to that.
These are supposed to be members of, it's supposed to be like the planning commission. If you give, it's supposed to be an advisory committee. Steve will be at the meetings as long as Ken, the.
She's part of the regional, I think.
She is automatically on the committee as well.
I have a couple other issues, but those are personal. I just felt you shouldn't have been on the committee. That's, there's, we're wasting asset there.
I believe myself that having Mr. Kimson, Mr. Tronley, even Mr. Safe available for these meetings as requested with the membership the way it's currently listed would be sufficient. Therefore, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the recommendations for the Parks and Recreation Committee as recommended with the Planning Commission Liaison being Jason Walker, Board of Trustees Liaison being Supervisor Reader, a member-at-large being Mr. Ken Thompson with a term expiring in December 31, 2024, member Christina Churchy for a term expiring December 31, 2023. I'm second.
I have a motion by Clerk Candell, supported by Treasurer Hallman. Is that the clerk please call forward?
Candell?
Aye.
Hannel?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Item L, Computer Maintenance Time Block Purchase Request. Madam, first.
Okay, because we just purchased 10 new overdue computers in the building, we have used up the hours of our time block that we had purchased before. So we are requesting at this point a tech care time block of 100 hours and $115 per hour, which extends out to $11,500. Normally, if we just went with hours used, we'd be billed depending on the job between $135 to $140 an hour. The time block would save a minimum of $2,000 if purchased in a hundred hour time blocks. I will make a motion to approve the purchase of a 100-hour time block from High Tech at the cost of $11,500. I'll support.
I have a motion by Treasurer Hallman, supported by Clerk Candell. Is that the clerk please call forward?
Hannel?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Item M, Liability Insurance Renewal Proposal. I believe we're tabling this one?
We are going, I am going to request that the board consider tabling this matter. And let me explain why. Our insurance carrier, who we are going to be working throughout the year and next year, we are actually going out for full renewal, excuse me, full open bid. Currently, right now, they're waiting for us to confirm and pass the budget, which had to happen this evening. Our renewal is due in July. We are actually going to have to do this renewal as of the first board meeting in August because they need our budget in order to review the financials in order to make the proposal. So I'm recommending that the board table this until the first meeting in August if this.
I'll make a recommendation that we table item M, the liability insurance renewal proposal, and revisit again either the beginning of August or possibly if a special meeting is called between now and July 1.
One additional caveat that actually did tie us up a little bit was we had to actually review our emergency equipment and come to find out that emergency equipment was valued at much more than we expected. So that was a little bit of a change for them also. So as you guys know, for us to replace that equipment is much more than what we purchased it for. Which I know sounds crazy. But after talking to our public safety director, it's very clear that number one, you cannot get a fire truck in if we have one towed out right now. So we had to change some of the modifications.
Motion on, is on the floor. Is there a second?
Yes, I'll second.
I have a motion by Clerk Candell, seconded by Treasurer Hallman. Is that the clerk please call forward?
Candell?
Aye.
Hannel?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Item M, Freedom of Information Coordinator Responsibility Modification. This is Madam, Great.
Good evening. Upon recent discussions and the advice of our township attorney, Mr. Addison, the Supervisor's Office is respectfully requesting that the board approve the transfer of duties of the foyer coordinator from the Supervisor's Office to the clerk. With the majority of the communities around us, the clerk is the one in charge of the foias. Foyer request is pretty much responsible and has all the records within an obtainable reach. Right now, it's actually bouncing from department to department because it's coming to our department, asking for the foyer and going back to the clerk to pull the records. So this is actually in line with the MTA. This is in line with all of our communities surrounding. And we spoke to the clerk and the clerk was in agreeance with this prior at this point.
Not to sound detrimental, but I know we moved water billings from the Supervisor's Office to the clerk's office or treasurer's office, okay, already. Now we're moving foias. That is.
Oh, boy.
I wouldn't, I'd see the list of duties and what's going on now because there's a lot of work that's, no offense, is left in our office. And, uh, and granted, other communities might be doing that, but you see where I'm going with this. I mean, everybody's got to have the ability to put in 32 hours a week.
Oh, trust me, I think everybody does.
I believe Mr. Addison would like to speak.
This is more, Mr. Supervisor, this is more of a legal question. Foias become quite constrained and the time limits are really, should be revisited too short for most communities to respond appropriately. But if you are going to meet those time limits, you really need the foyer to go right to the people who hold the records. And those people who hold the records is by law the clerk's office. So it was my recommendation that I would consider.
Well, I'm not, I'm not down here that it's going, it should go that way. That's not what I was saying. I was talking about, we're just looking at duties. I mean, I don't have a list of duties in front of me, but.
Well, if you, I didn't review last time, what I wanted to make clear was, I did this. It was my idea that it moved there to stop us from running into time constraints. I, it's not my job to consider what else are due. That is your job. And I understand what you're saying.
No, I had no, I had no problem with it moving. I don't.
Yeah, that's obviously me dealing with the workload we do in the departments at McComb Hospital. It brings up a lot of, I don't know. With that, any motions in order?
I have a motion, make a motion to approve the shifting of responsibility of freedom of information and coordinator from the Supervisor's Office to the clerk's office following the advice of the township attorney. Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Hallman, seconded by Clerk Candell. Is that the clerk please call forward?
Hannel?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Item O, The Clark Propose Endful Outreach Clinic Police Renewal. Wait.
Good. Again, the item in front of you tonight is a fifth amendment to a master agreement that has existed for a number of years between Lennox Township and McLaren McComb Hospital regarding the storage of their mobile medical clinic at Station Number Two. We have room for the bill, for the, for the vehicle at that station. It does provide the fire department some additional income to allow that to be stored in that facility. We have made the insurance company aware that likely it will be stored there again. It had upside that facility for just a couple of, weren't a couple of months, almost a full year. And now they were looking at a different storage option and they returned to us and renegotiated an agreement to put that back inside of our vehicle. We, the chief and I met with McLaren on site to ensure the vehicle fit appropriately within the, within the building and, uh, and would be safe to keep in there. We determined that to be the case. And I just recommended the township approve this fifth amendment to the original master lease between McLaren McComb and Lennox Township and its fire department for the use of that space within our building. And would ask that the board make a motion that would permit the township supervisor to execute this stuff.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the lease renewal of the McLaren McComb Medical Outreach Clinic at $400 a month, per month commencing June 1, 2022, as recommended by the Public Safety Director, Jeff White.
Second.
I have a motion by trustee Gurley, seconded by trustee Clifford. Is that the clerk please call forward?
Gurley?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Candell?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Hannel?
Aye.
Thank you. Item P, Planning Commission Bylaw Revisions. Mr. Addison, do you have a few words on this one?
Good evening again. I understand that the bylaws that were approved by the Planning Commission the other night, it, it basically extends the Planning Commission to five or seven members. And then there are some details providing the election out determine and that was figure two, major changes in compliance with initiative planning concerning enabling the AIs.
Is that, have you guys discussed Article Three, Section Three? Is that all good?
I looked that over. Um, yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with what's there now, but we switched because we were against the law or against the rules, so to speak. So I don't have a problem with what's going on. I have some questions and call for the board.
We'll get into that in a moment. Is that, is there a motion to board?
I mean, motion that we approve the Planning Commission bylaw amendments as recommended and previously approved by the Planning Commission. Support.
I have a motion by Clerk Candell, seconded by Treasurer Hallman. Is that the clerk please call forward?
Candell?
Aye.
Hannel?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Item Q, Commissions and Committees. Madam, first.
Okay, after speaking with the attorney, we have discussed this Monday, March 28 meeting that was put out as a training workshop that was held, was written as mandatory meeting. And it has been recommended that we pay the people who did show up to this meeting their normal wages for the commission that they, or the committee that they serve on. And that we further review the compensation for all committees and commissions and provide a recommendation at the August board meeting.
Yeah, I've been, I was stuck in the last two weeks before this in federal court and obviously my assistant was involved in changing careers. And questions that come to me, I was not available to answer probably as promptly as I normally would. I was able to address that today. And I just think although it's not clear cut, that the most appropriate way to handle this is to pay those who attended and took part in the entire session their, their pay. I think we should, my, my recommendation was, if you take a look at how this should work in the future, the word mandatory really doesn't have a specific legal meaning unless there's a punishment involved. I understand there is no punishment involved. So I think maybe we have to reword this and make it work better in the future. But to make it, to make sure that no one feels cheated, my advice is go ahead and pay.
Yes, please, no further discussion. Any more motions in order?
I will make a motion to have the attendees with the training workshop held on March 28, 2022 and to further review compensation for all committees and commissions providing a recommendation at the August board meeting.
A second. I have a motion by Clerk Candell, seconded by trustee Clifford. Is that the clerk please call forward?
Candell?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Hannel?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Item 12, Public Comment. Item 13, Call for the Board.
Yeah, I had a question, uh, Mr. Supervisor. Earlier in the, well, two, three weeks ago, whatever it was, MTA, I thought we didn't have a seventh member for the planning. So this week, I put up Mr. Ronald Simmons, on time employee of the township. He's run the board review. He's got two degrees. He's a master in human resources and a bachelor's in community development. And so I put him up because I knew he was a seventh person. And your word, we didn't have anybody at that time, okay, when we were at MTA or whatever it was. But I put him up and I notice he's nobody not put up on this list. And I just wondered why we wouldn't use a guy like that with two degrees. Probably knows more than myself included, half the people on that board. So I just wondered why he wasn't put up, whether it was a timeline thing or whatever it was. Maybe you can answer? I don't.
Mr. Addison?
Well, first, hold on. Let me turn this off.
The law requires that the supervisor make the recommendation.
Oh, I understood that, okay.
I don't want to receive this application.
The other thing is, is that, hold on, let me, I'm going to disappoint you both. The other thing is, is that this comment is not for discussion in an open debate between board. You state what you want. Everybody states what they want. And it's not, as much as you may want to answer, as much as you may want to ask. It's comment, board member by board member by board member. Discussions amongst board members are specifically required to follow certain legal standards. So you have the right to ask the question. You have the right to do with it what you want. But a discussion back and forth is not what this session is for at this time. If you, if you want to make a statement, you can. If you don't, you don't have to. Do you understand what I'm saying here? It's not at the end, all the board members speaking publicly to each other. That's a legal game and a dangerous game.
Thank you, Chris.
I just wanted to add something. As far as the wage proposal that came up tonight, I just wanted to state the reason I said no had nothing to do with the employees. The employees should have gotten a raise. I had an issue with the board's pay schedule. So I wanted to make that clear to all the employees. It had nothing to do with you guys getting raises. I absolutely agree with that.
Okay, there's no further discussion. Close session.
Make a motion that we go into closed session at 7:40 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, um, let's have a turn.
Make a motion that we return from closed session at 8:36.
Second.
She's good.
I'd like to make a motion that we proceed for the discussion in closed session.
Second.
I have motion by Court Candell, second by Treasurer Holland, and Deputy, and Deputy Clerk please call the board.
Candell?
Aye.
Hahnle?
Aye.
Clifford?
Aye.
Reader?
Aye.
Gurley?
Aye.
Item 15, adjourned.
Make a motion, motion be adjourned at 8:36.
Second.
I have motion by Trustee Clifford, second by Trustee Gurley, and Deputy Clerk, I do, no. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.